I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So it looks like we are going to start the approval of minutes from the February 1st regular session. First time. And now we will move on to the financial report.
Overall, we're in good shape for this kind of year. There are -- the only line that seems to be really kind of over expended at the moment is substitute salaries, which is kind of a running theme for this week.
And I think some of that are -- someday in the future, we'll try to ferret out day-to-day callouts versus long-term coverages, for example, maternity leave or long-term leaves. We don't really distinguish those two, but it would be nice to see that. You've got both going on, but... Your long-term absences, especially for maternity leaves, often you'll have someone out for the rest of the year that just -- and chances are, you're saving some money there in teacher salaries and covering that stuff. Other than that, we're plugging away.
Yep, and the other business, we're going to take care of in the meeting following this.
Can I ask a clarification, any questions? I think you addressed this, but I just want to be clear when it says teacher attendance challenges, are you referring to the day-to-day absences that you just mentioned, or are you talking about...
And that's what we're -- you've got some of both. Regular day-to-day is certainly still up higher than it's been, but you've got a couple of long-term absences too. So those two combined are causing the oldages.
Okay, because the way it was phrased, I just wanted to clarify. And the custodial staff continues to monitor and analyze, is there a leak? Is that what we're meaning by that phrase?
What is that on the water and sewer?
Yeah, water and sewer.
Yeah. We -- I cannot get a handle on it. We have been trying for you, Mary, though, for five years.
We had an issue that we had to bring to the select board. And a couple of years ago now, we had just a very high, not ridiculously expensive bill. A lot of it has to do with we are charged for water and sewer for the irrigation system. And we don't use the sewer, you know? So it becomes -- that becomes a bit of an issue. Jeff has done a very deep dive. He's connected with our outside vendors to look at what's going on.
He doesn't feel like there's a leak. Again, I'm going to see the last quarter. When we look at the last three years, it's just really hard to find a rhyme or reason on... When I look at the two quarters combined, they're close, the last two years. But for some reason, last year was lower for the summer months, and this year was through the roof. But I don't know if there's maybe a cutoff or different billing cycle. So I'm a little concerned that we could be a little short next year, that we haven't budgeted, because we looked at how we did last year and we got through. But there's definitely some...
We'll continue to explore. But from what I hear from the taxpayers in town, that many of you folks see this as...
That was my follow-up question. I was wondering if there was some...
Yeah. And you know, if we're a little short for next year's budget, hopefully it'll wash out. If I was really panicked and it was going to be a big number, I'd say we should be raising it soon. But I think we're okay. The kind of the battle over water versus sewer, we were told back then there was a one-time credit we were given. And I -- it was us irrigating more than usual, and I think there was a little leak. That was five years ago. But back then, we were told we'd get a credit, but there was no -- their policy, their being the town. So it's, you know, we're all talking about the same bottom line. So while we could push back to the water and sewer, even though they don't for the residents, pull back on sewage when they know it's just irrigation or filling the pool. So if we were to try and push and try to lobby again to change that process and only charge us for the water, you're going to reduce here and you're going to increase in the water and sewer department. So six of them, one half dozen of another. We're okay, but we're keeping an eye on it, trying to figure out a pattern. I've just had a hard time finding a pattern. As I look at it over three years, I cannot find consistency quarter to quarter. But we're going to keep looking. Yep.
Can I ask a clarification, too? So I know Kristen is kind of making some of the budget forms her own. But I noticed that some of the numbers don't match up, like the library and salary for 2024 on both forms is different by several thousand. I need to know, I don't know exactly what you're...
So on page two of six on Kristen's form where it says library for the salary for 2024, it says 91899 on this one.
You live in your...
Last year's budget? Both, yeah, both budget documents. Both are page two, actually.
So we probably didn't move the budget document for the transfers?
Possibly. And I've only gone, like, I've only seen...
No, those are your teachers' transfers, which you did transfers at the beginning of the year.
In the October meeting.
You look at your, if you look at your finance, they're evening out. And we will use this if we have questions at public hearing. Because what you did in probably October or November was you transferred money out of regular teaching to cover all of the other lines that are in this contract. When we started building the budget, the budget figures in the budget document for the public hearing, we must have the starting balances for this year, not the adjusted balances after we transferred. So the bottom line is the same. But if you look at the teacher's salary lines, each of them are going to be adjusted, the net is zero. Have I lost you?
A little bit.
So if you look at line 170, the teacher's salary, you can see that it's, you know, it's up some money. And what we did in October is we voted some money maybe out of that line. So it's not...
Okay, so probably about six or seven different lines.
Yeah, if I told the month, if I pulled the forms from September and October, you would be able to see it. So, well, we budgeted that whole bucket for the negotiations into line 170. And then we move it during a vote after the school year starts, when I started these documents.
Right, that's the bottom line. Is this budget public hearing document has our September starting balances? What you actually voted last June, as opposed to what we transferred, which ultimately, it's cleaner if we show the transferred numbers. But it's the numbers they were when we ended the budget process last year. Okay. Yep. Yeah, because this year we're down. If you looked at your September one, you'd have a number of lines that were negative. And we voted transfers to move them. The zeros in your finance report are showing that we've either spent or encumbered everything.
Oh, look at that.
So yeah, those that are zeros mean we're, you know, we know or think we're going to either spend pretty much all, which you should, especially for those kind of singleton professional sound lines. You know, there's two or three people in there. And we've budgeted exactly what we did for transfers to make sure that we put exactly what is needed in those lines. And there should not be any money left unless someone has left or changed during the year. So we should be good for this year. Then we're going to, just FYI, you can choose to bring or not, but we did put the public hearing documents. The other document, Jenna, that you were referring to is the document we'll be going through in a public hearing. So if you want to bring the packet when we go into the cafeteria, Kristen will have extras, but that's the document you'll work with when we go to the public hearing.
The only other, on the other business is the cafeteria review. Is there any other questions on, I mean, the report? We're going to move on to communications.
Only, you should have all received electronically the Southern Worcester County Ed Collaborative Quarterly Report. We legally have to get it out to you and put it on an agenda item in case the collaborative is ever audited to make sure their members are getting that report, so nothing other than that.
Did everyone got that right? So we will move on to Mrs. Kelly and the principal person.
All right, so as you'll see, enrollment remains pretty steady. We do not have any new updates on the emergency and shelter facilities. I have a lot of people asking, we have no new information. So they're here still, and we will update you when we receive notification of any changes. Recognitions, I just want to thank Amy Cantwell and the entire reading department for organizing our annual Read Across America event. It's always wonderful to see so many previous staff members and community members at the event. We love that. Curriculum instruction and assessment, grades will close on March 11th. Report cards will be issued on the 22nd. They will be issued electronically. Parent-teacher conferences, there is a change here, will be held on Tuesday, March 26th. That's the early release day, and then Wednesday, March 27th. We have an upcoming early release for professional development on March 21st. And that will focus on M-Test preparation and training, as well as some math training, help me, math program training for Bridges. Dates of the M-Test testing are there for you. Kindergarten registration is ongoing. Our numbers are more typical this year than they were last year. I think we're at a high 70 at this point, where we were like in the 55 range last year. So hopefully we captured folks and we won't have the large number of registrations in late August, but most days. Screening will take place on April 30th and May 1st. Other events happening, Burgess has Got Talent will occur on April 3rd. And fifth, PTO will be hosting the annual Jog-a-thon. It's going to be, I believe we'll set the date for the week after we break, and we'll keep going back outside. I think everybody will be very happy, and the families will be able to come and watch. And lastly, for my update before, you can peruse the Department of Grade Level Updates and the other important dates that are on the calendar. I just want to make mention that last Friday, we held our, we held a meeting with the rep leagues, softball, Little League, and lacrosse. Mrs. Binsy attended that meeting. As we've mentioned in the past, distributing the times and the fields and the utilization of the facilities as a whole is a really heavy lift, and it's very difficult. From the standpoint that we want to provide access to all the children, and we always have to say no to somebody, we then find that fields aren't being utilized to the extent that we thought they were. So we had a very nice meeting. I thank everybody for coming. We are going to look at further firming of some of our processes.
Yes, so actually, I would like to ask, what I asked for a motion on this stuff?
Let me talk through what you're hoping, and then, yeah, so, you know, a full motion or at least a...
So what I would like to do is ultimately, I feel like this happens three times a year. And it's over a thousand kiddos that are coming here and utilizing the field and the gym. And it's just, as Mrs. Kelly stated, a big, heavy lift. So what we're trying to do is meet with the town in the next coming week, the TA and also rep, and see if there's something that we can do in collaboration where they would submit to ultimately Annie's rep director. And she would then submit to Burgess, and we would check off the approval. So there was a, there was a program that was purpose three years ago, two years ago. And I think it was about $8,000, I forgot the name of it. We put in, I want to say 1,600, am I about that?
Through BED. Because BED does have to sign up to utilize the...
And the program is something that we can plug in all the fields in town, and everyone can sign up for spots. And so whoever's, you know, managing that can ultimately see what fields are being used at what time. And we all know that there's field shortage in town, obviously. But to my knowledge, no one's using the program. So it's not being utilized by the towns, which was its purpose, was for this, to like eliminate this. So we are going to hopefully meet with Robin next week. And so if we need to be, and if it doesn't go the way I'm hoping it will go, I would like to ask the committee's support to go in front of the Board of Selectmen. And if we need to involve the town at a higher level, I would like to do so. And so I would ask for a motion, I guess, to support that, or a vote.
I think to support you having that meeting and conversation, I think would be...
And I'm happy if anyone else wants to join also.
Vote in support of would be...
Yeah, so that's what I would ask of my...
Can I ask any further questions?
Of course.
So is it just for them to manage the use of the field?
Because I have no lens, when I'm granting permission, I have no lens if they're using, they're something with highway bond. I don't know if they're using fields at the high school or the DNI, or Turner Fields. I literally get blanket requests because they are servicing a lot of children. So like the situation that we have, that we have right now, we have two leagues requesting, you know, basically sunup to sundown time, and leaving no available time for another smaller, more up-and-coming league. And what we have to do is sit down and try to negotiate that. So that's something that is really challenging, because I don't have a clear idea as to what, are they asking every place that they're putting in, and are they being granted all of that time? And therefore, we're blocking an entire league from utilizing it, so...
Does it include the courts, the basketball courts, or just the field?
It would include everything. Facilities in general, because we have utilization beyond, like, we'll have, well, right now...
Volleyball.
Volleyball, we have...
Gym.
Yep.
Gym, the lacrosse.
Scouts are using them, which is not a town rep department, so we would be managing that. But there's a lot of utilization that goes on that you don't see. It's wonderful. I'm thrilled that the building is used the way that it is. It has, it gives life, it makes, you know, it keeps the school the center of the community. It's just managing that is near to impossible from our seat. And it really doesn't bring goodwill to the school, because people are angry and, you know...
It's not like Tantascul where we have an athletic director because we have sports teams. These are towns, and it's coming, and we want support it. But at the same time, when you have one league asking for sunup to sundown, and then they're granted that, and then they're not using it two, three nights a week, and you have to tell the subject, no. And then you come up here, and then, you know, and it doesn't paint the school or the administration in a good light, and it kind of puts us in a bad spot. You're going to upset someone, and I feel bad since this program is purpose, and we have the capability to do it. Hopefully, we won't need to take a step further, but if we need to, I'm happy to go and do that. And I would like to ask for your support to do that as well. Do I ask for a vote? Could I ask for a vote in support to go to the Board of Selectmen if we need to do that? Tell me why. Thank you. All favors? Thank you. And I just have another follow-up on that, because I did try to find it. Do we have a facilities use policy?
There's a handbook.
Okay.
And it's on our website.
I have the form that they fill out.
It's a handbook that they post online.
Okay, fine.
So there would really be, and we're glad you have it, across the district, we don't have policies voted by you, because then it gets so stringent that you need to vote again, two votes to change it. There are processes, protocols, and forms, and the handbook, so if you don't have...
Right, yeah, okay, okay. I did find the form, I can find that on there. Okay.
And if the handbook's not there, that, I actually believe facility use, I thought under the new website was something that I was trying to work with, and either have a separate tab in itself, but one more drop down and you might shoot me, or just really make sure that each facility use, each individual school has a facility use, because I think under forms and documents and the main thing, it goes to the Tantascul, which is not relevant. And I'm going to put it on the list to check again, because I do recall having a conversation with Steven, apparently. On the Burgess one, yeah, okay. Yeah, there's a lot of them out there. So please...
And if there's anything else, Mel, we can move on to 6:20.
All right, I need to get my eye on the clock, because we need to recess at 6:20. So let's see what I can get through. I'm sorry, we need to recess at 6:30, it's 6:40 now. It was all there. So first on the agenda, and I will hand out four of you anyway. So we have to, and I have to give full credit to Jodi Barasa and the rest of the central office team who has been diligently working for two months now, I bet, to do what the state is requiring us to do, regardless of whether we're getting more money or not. This is, if you'll recall, three or so years ago, the Student Opportunity Act was passed. It's a piece of legislation that the bill specifically called out adjustments in the funding formula. It included the requirement for us to report what we're going to do with all this extra money. Now, in some years, there is no extra money. There's a little extra Chapter 70 money coming here, although I would argue it is due to your increase in population, not so much the Student Opportunity Act formula. Three of my districts are only going to be getting the minimum $30, so it's a little per student, it's a little exhausting to have to do. I'm giving you the three-page summary. They're 25-page documents for each of the five, six districts, that we have to fill out and upload to them by the end of the month. I'm sharing with you the summaries. Our charges are, I'm trying to find my sheet, sheet there. The Student Opportunity Act actually specifically calls out some categories that we're supposed to be targeting spending additional money on. And they're in the areas of physical and mental health, and targeting the lowest performers in various subgroups, and overall, these are areas that we're always doing. So whether we get more money or not, these are things that we have been planning to do anyway. So fortunately, we already have been making plans to move forward. So when this survey came out that said we've got to fill this thing out and submit it, we were easily, while it wasn't easy and it was very time-consuming to put together, the what areas do we concentrate on came up pretty quickly. So in this three-page summary, we go into much more detail afterwards, but we certainly spell out our mathematics, curriculum change, and the target there for the overall population, knowing we need to continue to work on our multi-tier support systems. We go into bullets there, talking about our sense of belonging and social emotional learning. We got grants from the state this year that will go into next year, I think, Jodi, right? This is not the three-year, actually, some of the academies are three-year academies. Our L, we knew that we were working on increasing our L curriculum and programming. So that's called out there, especially when we do look at our subgroups that are lowest performing. They'll be in the L area, they'll be in the disability areas, low income. They're the same things we've been talking about for years. So we do a lot of mentioning on that, so that we can check off the boxes that they've asked us to. And then we put a total of the dollars that we plan on spending over the next three years. That will include the payment for your math curriculum. It includes the additions of L staff and the stipends for some of the academies going on and the work there. So we're doing this because we have to, but the good news is it's just forcing us to document what we've already been planning to do for the next three years. It's part of our district improvement plan. But I wanted to share with you the summary. Once we upload the document, we've got a couple more tweakings, and sure, truth be told, the five elementary schools look very much the same. They've all got the same lowest-performing populations, they're all working together with the math curriculum. The Tantascul document will have to look a bit different, but in some cases, similar. When they're all done and uploaded, we will also put them on our list.
So is this, this 170 is what we are going to spend over three years for?
Yes.
Does that include the grants, or is that just funding?
Includes the grant. Yeah.
And in the full document, you'll see each goal is expanded. And for each goal, there is, in some cases, money tied to it. And in other cases, I think four goals of the three, there's money tied to it either through grant funding or budget. And then there's one, the professional development to the math program. It comes with the purchase of the program, so we don't have additional funds for that. It's all tied into the same price, but it is a three-year cost.
Okay, and then keeping an eye on there, what is not noted, obviously, the next bullet for the vote, we need to do our public hearing and then come back and take the formal vote to move forward for that. Another, a couple of other updates. We have made a decision on the math curriculum, we'll be going with Bridges. Good to hear. You know, we sent out a survey to staff to get a feel for not only their preference, obviously, it wasn't, do you prefer one over the other, because folks piloted one or the other. We also were looking for feedback on how the pilot process went, and that was enlightening. So we have learned a number of things about the pilot process that we will change whenever we next pilot any curriculum. But of those who piloted Bridges, 75% said, yes, I would recommend this product. Of those that piloted Go Math, only 50 to 55% said, I would. More important to me, when I started looking at the comments, because it was kind of the open-ended question, is at far more of the comment, the comments that are student-based are talking about Bridges and its ability to really hone in and increase critical thinking. And some of those using Go Math called out the fact that Go Math didn't do that enough. And one or two even commented that they had been able to sneak a peek at their peers working with Bridges and were a little jealous. So the biggest challenges, which we might have mentioned at the beginning of the year, I can't recall, the biggest challenges for Bridges were the planning time, the prep time, and the training. So we know, and we've already started adjusting the rest of this year's professional development time, the half-days that are left, to start focusing with ordered supplies and subscriptions, and planning to use the rest of this year's PV time to start ramping up, as well as making sure that we have plenty for next year. So it's certainly on us to make sure we give them the prep time. But it's certainly, you know, anytime you do a new curriculum, there are challenges, and it's kind of hard to get your head around anything new. And we won't be able to use the lesson plans that we've been using for nine years now, and need to start from scratch by modules. So we recognize that, we're working on that, but...
And more importantly, you know, student performance typically would decrease over a pilot period. We did not see that trend. So our students, even with the newer curriculum, had great gains, just like those who were working in the previous Go Math.
That was a very pleasant surprise, and it was almost across the district, which is something you worry about a little bit.
And furthermore, we have far more knowledge and resources to be able to help the other half of the staff who did not get the exposure this year. So it can only grow. We're not, we're not starting from way behind, like we were with, you know, with one day of training and not a lot of preparation. Now we'll have that much more resource than ever.
That is it for my report, until we come back to it after the public hearing, and I see 6:29, so... You don't need a vote, the chair just calls a recess.
Okay, so I will call a recess, we're ready for session, and we will...
Head on over to the...
Yes.
Not library, that period.
Hey, I'd like to call the public hearing to order, and we're going to start the introductions.
Good evening, I'm Mary Bridget Burns.
Good evening, I'm Mary Bridget Burns.
Nice to meet you.
Jennifer Tua.
Deborah Tippett.
Kathy Kelly, principal.
Kristen Neowen.
Catherine, I'm going to turn over to you.
Thank you. This is Kristen's first public hearing, so we're going to take it easy on her, right? Kristen is going to just do a quick high level of the pie charts for those who are more visual learners than numbers. And then for this year, Kathy and I are going to run through the detailed documents and answer any questions.
Yep, you've got three slides of charts on that. The first one is your operating budget by your series, the one thousand series. These are just DESI numbers, so for functions, so that's your central office and any sort of district-wide expenses which are broken down and you pay a percentage, Burgess pays a percentage of those. Then the instruction, which is your teachers, your textbooks, anything, paraprofessionals, anything that is specific to classroom instruction. Your three thousand series is your performing arts, your nursing staff athletics. Four thousand series is your building maintenance, so that goes to your utilities and those items, acquisition of fixed assets, if we have any sort of larger machines that we need to purchase to maintain, those are in there. And of course, the nine thousand series is our out-of-district tuitions. This year, there's not a lot of movement or changes to these. If we have a large increase in one of the areas as opposed to the others, that's what we see. So the change in the green, which is your, let's see, out-of-district tuitions, went up slightly by point three percent, as well as the three thousand series increased a little bit to ten point nine from ten point four. Overall, the majority of money is spent on instruction. These numbers are reflected in the packet of one of the eight. Then are, just to show the changes to the budget increases over the past five years, you can see that we're coming in under three percent for fiscal twenty twenty-five for our elementary budget at two point nine, just below the five-year average of three point five. And lastly, I'm just showing the enrollment figures over the last five years. These are the foundation enrollment numbers for our first year. And you can see that we are up slightly for fiscal twenty-three, which is nine hundred two. Pretty cool building.
For those, I think Mike is the only new face. Most of you have been here many times before, so we will act like you are all new and remind you. And so those who have been here for at least a year or two know we are coming off of a really tough year. Last year, last couple of years, we have been struggling with out-of-district tuitions and special needs that we could just not meet within our abilities despite all of our specialized programs. So most of you are aware of that huge spike we had last year. So we're really happy to be coming in below three percent this year and optimistic for the budget cycle. Kathy and I chatted through a couple of things that are either moving around a little bit in the budget or causing things to hold steady. And we'll go from there. So we are looking at just below two point, but we are now on the big page document or so. Yep?
Did you remind me, the big increase last year was driven by?
Out-of-district tuitions. Specialized tuition and transportation for a number of placements that we could just no longer serve in district. One of them, I think, was a residential, and those are just quite expensive. Yep?
Quick question. Do you have much students that come in by school choice?
Burgess is not a school-choice school, so no one comes in disturbed by school choice. Tantasca has school choice, so we vote that year-to-year based on the space. But Sturbridge is not a school-choice town.
We do service some of the other Union sixty-one towns in our specialized program. So for example, a student meeting specialized programming from Wales or Holland may actually come to Burgess, and there is a tuition process through that, but just if you hear that there's children from those towns.
So if there would be income coming in from that, where would that go?
There's a revolving fund on the books in the town to pay for that, this special. There's a couple of specialized programs in this building. Okay, so the first two pages are just, they're the high-level summaries. Page one is exactly, especially the top end of page one, is the pictures that Kristen just went through, the breakdown by series. Then the bottom showing a little bit of, we pull out specialized, the special ed costs. We often, when we're billing the budget, look at special ed costs just to have a quick snapshot as to what that driving figure is in a hope of not penalizing regular operations because something is volatile with specialized education. But in this year, it's all holding pretty steady. The second page are just more detail, ups and downs. But when we go into the detail, I will probably address most of these. If anyone wants to come back to the summary pages, I'm happy to. We're going to move on to the second page one. The, we'll start with a thousand, one thousand series at the top, administration. Oh, these are my own things, they wouldn't, it's fine. Here, right here. Yeah. But I normally don't show this, so I have to do this. Okay. All right, I am on the page that starts with your school committee and your superintendent expenses. All with me? Okay. So these are, as they say, your school committee expenses, superintendent's office, so that's central office. Mike, in November, the central office budget is voted by all thirty-four of my school committee members that get together at a joint meeting and vote the total central office budget. It's then chopped into six pieces. So what we're seeing here is Burgess's share alone, or the Sturbridge School District's share of the total central office budget. So the total central office budget this year that was voted in November was up about two percent. Burgess's share of that is moving from twenty-four point eight nine percent to twenty-five point three six percent based on enrollment. So we look at the enrollment against, across the entire district, and that's what deems the share. So that increase down there is a combination of a two percent budget increase, but also a half a percent or so increase in the share of that budget. Other than that, there are no changes in central office in staffing positions or anything else. Any questions on that page? Okay, we'll get into the meat and potatoes. So I do want to note, and I'll try to hit them as we move along, some of the current fiscal twenty-four, the figures in the fiscal twenty-four budget column have been adjusted. The net is still zero, but in the beginning, a few months ago, the school committee voted to transfer money from one line to another, and those have not been reflected here. And those are because, these numbers are where we ended on June thirtieth. Then we negotiated and settled the contract. When we settled that contract, we needed to transfer monies out of the regular teacher line to cover every other line in that unit to make sure they're covered. But it was really a negotiation, housekeeping issue. So when I run into them, I may fire out to you what current year figures really are. The net is zero again. So Kathy, if we start looking at where the ups and downs are, I think the first thing to talk about is under the regular teaching salary line. That looks like it's only a small increase. In reality, it's moving from five one one nine four seven four to the fifty-two seven seven eight sixty-eight. The adjustment there, other than contractual, and we have no one negotiating this year, by the way, so that's good, because usually we'll let you folks know if we're negotiating, when the negotiating pool of dollars is in this budget. No negotiation, so these are all hard contractual figures. The only shift that we have in teaching salaries goes along with line one eighty-five, where you can see ed assistants going down. What we've done there is, current year, we budgeted one English learner teacher and two English learner assistants to equal one for them. Correct? So one and one, for all intensive purposes. We were already increasing our population before the influx that we had at the beginning of the year and needing to look at the model, but especially given the middle of the year. What we've done is changed the model to two certified English learner teachers and not needing aid. So in that large regular teacher number is another certified English learner teacher, and we decreased the classroom assistant that we normally had, we had been using at the beginning of the year. If that makes sense? How many retired we have this year? Quiet here. Next, a number that's inaccurate and comes into play. Under special ed teacher, the number this year is really eight two five four eight five, not that seven three nine four eleven, okay? And that was all transferred, that's where we stand right now, once we transferred and put staff in the number pot. What was that number? Eight two five four eight five. Comes in key to know that that number is indeed going down from eight two five and change to the seven one two. That is a decrease in one point oh special ed teacher in exchange for, now I need to jump ahead on the wall. Guidance. On the next page, line three three oh, you see a bump there from the one seventy-three to the two sixty-one. So that is looking at our special ed teaching model and our need for adjustment counselors. So we're trading off a special ed teacher or another adjustment counselor.
A special education teacher that we eliminated was actually like a behavioral special education teacher, you know, sort of doing part of the role, started to look more like a counseling role as opposed to a behavioral role. So the need was to actually not have somebody who's not credentialed to do the counseling and hire somebody who could do the counseling, particularly for our older students.
Okay. There's a little dip there under line two fifteen, which is integration assistance. That's just due to turnover. Those are your classroom assistants, usually directly connected to special ed IEPs or five oh four needs. And so we're not decreasing staff numbers, but there has been turnover and therefore decreasing costs. Contracted services, line two ten, that is where your OTPT, your occupational or physical therapies, your music therapies, your teacher of the deaf and blind contracted services, we don't have enough need to have full-time teacher of the deaf and blind, but our needs have been increasing. So that is a product of increased needs, as well as some of the OTPT are actually Sturbridge employees and their salaries increase. What else do we see, Kathy? Oh, yes, subs. Subs, yes. I'm so sorry. So your substitutes, for state reporting purposes, we have to, we used to have just one substitute line. For state reporting purposes, we have to have, quote, certified subs and otherwise subs. So it's a crapshoot, it's a guess. So this year, we have a total of a hundred thousand dollars in substitute. We just kind of plugged in attendance and maybe we'll have ten thousand dollars of certified long-term subs. That may or may not be the case. It's really just for reporting purposes. But if you combine those and see the hundred thousand versus the ask next year of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, that is to bring back what this building had for a number of years, which is a permanent sub. Substitutes are still hard to get. Absenteeism is still a struggle for long-term leaves as well as day-to-day. And we have not been, last couple of years, we had COVID funds, federal funds to help pay for some of these additional subs. That's gone. By the end of this year, that will all be gone. But the model really to pull back a permanent, at least knowing that you've got a permanent sub here every single day to start with, it is unlikely that we'll be mating the building with only one sub. I can't imagine that we have any days that don't need one.
Oh, no, but it's also good to have somebody that.
But it's good to have that reliability.
Experienced, you know, people, somebody who's familiar with the working of the school.
So that person will be here full-time whether they need to sub?
They will need to sub anyways. Just the meeting schedule that happens here, so for IEPs and different, a different variety of meetings, there are constant meetings happening here every day. There's never a day that we don't have meetings.
And if you look at last year's expenditures, we're still, I mean, last year, we, I'm not even sure, we had a couple of long-term maternity leaves last year. So even if I don't deal with that long term and just look at the regular line of one thirty-four, we, you know, have been blowing things out. We're going in optimistically next year to say, hopefully, between those two, the permanent sub and then the day-to-day subs that we're going to be down.
So permanent sub would be credential licenses?
No, doesn't, no, probably not. Probably not. Sometimes you get someone that applies to that just really doesn't want to have a teaching class, but usually not. And we certainly, we certainly look for degreed and some experience is a plus, but it's not a requirement. But it's an employee with benefits as opposed to the day-to-day subs that we're.
Just, yeah, just keeping in mind, like, we are having a hard time covering the building on a day-to-day basis. It's a mammoth task, Mr. Guarnoni, it's one of the assistant principals in one of the ed assistants, Lynn Concepcion, they work feverishly trying to cover. But we actually frequently have to pull a support staff member in order to cover a classroom or a reading department person to cover a classroom. So we're taking people out of their assigned duties and having them cover because we can't always get subs to cover the classrooms that just have to be covered.
So that person now, what I took from that is this could be a non-degreed person, therefore not, so they're not teaching when they're covering a class for one hour, half day, full day, or whatever?
They.
What are they doing?
Pushing the curriculum forward. So they would be following lesson plans that have been left by the teacher. And ideally, it would be somebody we could get that was credentialed, but it will be tough at that, at that rate to get somebody credentialed.
Teachers have to leave lesson plans. Usually sitting there whether they're out, they're always lesson plans sort of on hold in case they are not here. So there are lesson plans that subs do their best to deliver and keep moving forward.
So you're saying with a permanent sub, they have better ability to flow, to flow better with the lesson plans or the teaching, the curriculum that's being taught?
If you have a permanent person and you know, and again, it's totally up to the administration if they know someone's going to be out for, say, a month's surgery. If you know you've got that person, you could immediately prep them to cover for that, that month as opposed to just infusion, you know? But even so, knowing right off the bat, every single day, you've got one person that you, when either you get call-outs or you've got some coverage you need to do during the day for various different meetings, team meetings, parent meetings, we're always looking to cover teachers so they can come out for a bit. So the administration, I mean, we don't even, we don't have to do permanent sub, we could just increase the cost because we definitely need more money, but we're hoping to get someone more reliable committed every day than our day-to-day subs, which most of them aren't necessarily, they're calling subs because they don't want to commit to an everyday job.
Familiar with the discipline policies, you know, expectations, routines, have some familiarity with the students, a familiar face.
Have the long-term subs ever required to do more subsidies themselves?
In some cases, yes. So then that's a certified teacher. And the vast majority of times, it is a certified teacher.
This being a sizable differentiator organization, it would be surprising if you didn't have a flow group.
I mean, we're a hundred fifty staff.
We did, we had one pre-COVID. Then during COVID, we were, we were just desperate to find anybody we could. And actually, it's a little bit cheaper for the day-to-days than a. And actually, it's a little bit cheaper for the day-to-days than a permanent, which would make sense. And we used all the money we could to get in as many day-to-days as we could during those couple of years. I don't see anything else on that page. Oh, actually, that's not true. Under hardware, line two-ninety-five, we can either now or later, which is first. You also upgives a capital plan. So, there's a two-page capital plan, the first page of which is the physical plant. The second page should, and it does, tie out with your technology. So, page two is the capital plan to go along with that hardware line under technology, showing the plan next year, a combination of updating some teacher desktop workstations. I think it's the iPads that we're looking to update the devices. Yeah. And then infrastructure, there are server upgrades and access points for your Wi-Fi. It is important to note, we will be further populated further out to the right. Once we get through this year, if you can notice, the last couple of years were really big total numbers. We, this year have been able, or for next year, we're able to lower it because we're spending down the last of the S R money. So, there were three rounds, S R three for us, sunset's June thirtieth, was a two-year pool of dollars. We tried our best and I think did a pretty good job of spending the S R COVID-based money on more things than people so that we didn't build a cliff and all of a sudden have staff that we could not continue to find. The things we bought were HVAC upgrades and technology. So, we were able to ramp up this year with devices and last year and this year with smart board replacements to allow us to take a little bit of a break next year and not do as much as we will. The year after, we might need to get back and you might see that number starting to up. But for the next year or two, we should be able to keep it down lower than it had. Does that make sense? Okay. Anything else on that page?
What do you expect from those other funds? Is this two seconds headed down, but here you say a sheet, you had additional expenses, you can only show it here.
Correct, because we had grant funds that are going to go away. So, the S R grant funds over a two-year period, I think, was about three or four hundred thousand dollars. So, we spent a couple hundred thousand dollars on, there was one staff member that we were able to move back into the budget and the rest was replacing smart boards and getting a good stack of Chromebooks. Chromebooks now, I don't know, people always wonder, probably in five years. So, your Chromebooks have become your cases of paper and pencils that we're going to need to keep replacing every five years or so. They're cheap-ish, compared to good old laptops and computers, but we're going to need to keep replacing them. Anything else?
So, then, more downloads and additional ones from here for, they said normally you put a lot of your capital plan or your operating portfolio there, or like, hey, now we've got extra money, let's go for the resources.
Well, for the most, half of it we use for additional staff. We cut the, to deal with mental health, we'd increase an adjustment counselor. And, but we intentionally didn't want to build a plan that all of a sudden, next year, we were three hundred thousand dollars short and the mental health problem has not gone away. The notion that two or three years' worth of some extra funds is going to stabilize the student population just is not what happened. So, we still have the needs. We have out-of-district tuition that have upticked because of dual diagnoses, but we intentionally didn't want to hire all the staff we would have loved to hire and then not be able to get. So, we use some for capital items, some of which would have been in the plan, some of which we would not have been able to replace the smart boards as quickly as we did. Smart boards that have been here at the inception of the building would have taken us another four to five years to replace them. And then they would have been built out of the capital plan. The next page is just a little short, it's the continuation. We talked a little bit of what's going on with the guidance. That's the adjustment council that we're hoping to increase in exchange for special ed, that was really counseling. Then right below that, your psychological services, I don't know if you say the current, the current actor transfers number is two-sixty-three-seven-four-five. So, from there to the two-seventy-nine, it's not additional person at all. It's the same people, it's, they're all newer, so they're moving steps and colors. Any other questions on that page? The next page starts with health. Health office, pretty much the same. The big story on this page is transportation, which is always our big story. So, first I'll deal with regular transportation, which defies logic a little bit that that line is down for bus driver salaries. I hope, most of you probably know, this is the first year of a unionized bus driver course. So, they unionized, joined the Teamsters. So, the cost of the bus driving is certainly increased. However, nationally, it is still near impossible to get CDL drivers, whether they are driving buses or trucks. So, we struggle with bringing on bus drivers. We are still short, we are currently short three runs compared to pre-COVID. So, we have very, very tight buses, we're getting it done in-house, but very tight buses. While I love to say we're going to find three drivers and be able to train them for next year, I'm going to be realistic, I'm not going to ask for more money than I need. We're optimistically hoping that we can find one more to add for next year and relieve a little bit. And that's what these numbers are based on, is one more than we have now. But when you knock down the two that we've, the two more that we've been budgeting for years, that ends up in a decreased line even though bus driving rates have increased. Okay?
So, have we pledged two less FTEs than we had?
Correct, yep, yep. If you look down a little bit, the alarming number there on buses, you can see, a couple of years ago, we could get two buses at about eighty to ninety thousand dollars apiece. They are now a hundred and twenty-five dollars apiece. We only purchased one this year and one last year. We've got to get back on purchasing two. You've got a total fleet of twenty buses, which covers some spares. In a perfect world, you've got fifteen or sixteen runs. By replacing, we had been in a process of replacing two a year. So, any bus is no more than ten years old before we're turning it in. We got off of that for a year or two because finance was more hard, were difficult, and we were hoping the cost of vehicles would go down. It has not, it hasn't. So, we need to get back on to buying two buses. Now, the reminder, when buy two, the cost is shared. All of these costs are shared with Tantascal. Almost fifty-fifty, so that's what you see. So, Mike, when you see down below that less TRSD assessment, Tantascal will pay half. It all sits in a revolving fund on the town of Sturbridge's books, Tantascal pays half. Almost half, they probably pay a little more than half because included in your bus driver salaries are late runs. So, we don't just take the total thing and divide it by half. We do the regular runs, half and half, and then Tantascal only pays for the three-thirty and the five o'clock late runs. Other than that, they share, they split the cost of your mechanic, your coordinator, training, and the purchase of buses. So, that Mac Daddy number of two-fifty for two buses, Tantascal will be paying for one. Does that make sense? The only thing that is not split in half in this category is the other Mac Daddy number of special ed transportation. So, to complicate things even more in our already complicated district, the special ed transportation and the tuitions that we're going to get to in a minute, then on the last page, out-of-district students are Sturbridge students that cannot be served within our Union sixty-one towns, within the walls of Burgess or Tantascal Junior, Senior High. If they need to leave for an out-of-district placement, all of them, ages two-point-nine, two years, nine months, a specialized, special ed student is eligible for services through age twenty-two are in the elementary budget. And that is because years ago, when the regional agreement was born, no town wanted to pay for some other town's students. The only way to make sure every town is paying for only their own and the cost of out-of-district or in-district is to put K through twelve costs for special ed in the elementary budget. So, that's important to know, that that number, it is huge, it is not uncommon for the cost of fifteen percent of the population, special needs students to be as much or more than the cost of all of the regular ed students because they are specialized. They could be singletons being transported to, we've got some out of Framingham, Devens, we've got Northampton, a little on the edge of Connecticut. So, we do our best, we run it in-house, so we do our best to be able to consolidate runs with the other four towns. And occasionally, if we've got a singleton student going, say, to Framingham and Southbridge knows about it and has a student, we will, we will take their student and charge them for half the run. So, we do everything we can to make it as tight as possible, but it, but it's tough. It's a big number and it's a, it's a pretty volatile area, just the placements is volatile, the tuition, the transportation of it is tough. But it's important to know that it's K through twelve.
This is more like a passenger van version.
Correct. There are minivans or there are nineteen passenger buses. So, here, and that covers the transportation of any special needs student that's in district. So, we've got, you've got three or four, how many minibus is coming here every day?
I think it's four at least, yeah.
So, you've got four minibus that come here, one or two that go up to Junior High, High School, as well as any completely out-of-district transportation. Also in that line, I think, we started calling it, on another document, we started calling it specialized transportation because it also would include here, except for this year, homeless transportation, which we legally have to provide. We use our local fleet when we can. This year, some of our homeless transportation, we've got separate grant fund that we can charge for some of that transportation cost, but usually it's included there also.
All right. And I'm just trying to get.
Yep.
Wrap around that. So, the Tantascal budget, the four-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, that's Sturbridge's portion of Tantascal's?
It is, it is the cost to transport all Sturbridge secondary kids up to Tantascal.
Okay.
Yep.
Just, okay.
Yep. What you will see, so when you go to town meeting, you're going to see three lines related to schools. You're going to see this twelve, thirteen million dollar number. You're going to see Tantascal's operating budget, which is Sturbridge's share of the total budget. And then you're going to see Tantascal Transportation, which is Sturbridge students, the cost of transportation. You will not see that four-eighty-five or that five-thirty-five because it will be reduced by, the state gives regional transportation reimbursement. We wait every year through the budget process to find out how much that will be or what percentage. They're supposed to give, well, they're supposed to give ninety-nine percent. I'm not holding my breath. It's been holding around eighty to eighty-five percent. So, when we see through the budget process, we reduce the anticipated reimbursement before we put the assessment on the town warrant.
Okay, got it.
All right.
So, line four-thirty includes transportation to students who are attending school here at Burgess as well as those that are attending schools out of district.
Right. So, it includes any special, those minibus or vans, mostly minibus come here. Whether they come here or the junior high or the senior high because they need specialized in-district transportation or if they're going out. The ones going out are more, are almost all the minivans because those are going to be onesie-twosies. We've got, we do have a handful that go to Southern Worcester County Collaborative in Dudley. So, that would be a minivan that's got a few students, or if we've got enough in Sturbridge, that could be a minibus.
How many students are we covering through this?
Okay, I'm just a little ill prepared because I've had a meeting before and forgot my binder.
Um, I'm, so I keep, hold on. Can I get back to you? I'll just go to my computer. Burgess is smaller, but I mean, hold on.
Well, we're looking at the total, how many do you have in, in district, first of all? Well, number of students, just looking for number of students. We're looking for how many of your students need transportation here, how many buses each one? Because I know what's going on.
My students?
Yeah, I know what's going on. There's probably, there's about a total of twenty-five students going elsewhere, not at Burgess, the junior high and senior high.
And we could, I believe our number's like around thirty-five.
Okay. So, and I know, I know there are a few up at the junior high and the high schools. So, it, yeah, it's between sixty and seventy students of various different needs in various different places.
And that's through twenty, like kindergarten through age twenty-two?
Correct, right, that's what's key. Kindergarten through, not pre-twelve, twenty-two. So, depending on their needs and their needs, it could go to age twenty-two.
And that's the, and we're looking at over a million dollars here for that transportation. Just, those transportation plus the other out-of-district tuitions you're paying.
Well, you've got over a million, you've got like eight-hundred thousand.
And that's the best way to have these students have to travel distances versus we have the resource come into town and certainly probably get, well, hopefully, you know, the same or better services, but across this. This is the most efficient way to serve the needs of these students.
Yeah, so, I mean, you folks have funded the addition of three programs to Burgess in the past ten years. We've built three additional programs to service our students who have, you know, unique challenges. When you get to a point that the challenges are beyond what the scope of the school, we then have to go through a process and find a placement for them. As Deb had said earlier, what happens oftentimes is we're able to keep them here in-house until, you know, through sixth grade. They get older, dual diagnoses start to enter in. So, you know, that, that actually complicates the case. And they have more challenges in the junior and senior high setting. So, that's what, that's what happens. And these schools that we send out to are, you know, uniquely set up to address those types of needs.
Actually, that was put very diplomatically. Finance committee ought to know that there are times, there's pretty big senior high school students and everybody winds up controlling them by rolling around on the floor, actually, physically. And there are students who wear football helmets because they bang their heads against the wall. They actually do that. And also, I think the committee wants to keep in mind that several years ago, towns, wisely, in my view, decided a long-term decision in a sense of forever decision. And that was to invest, invest, invest with the intention of keeping here as many students fully educated to the extent that they are educable with the underlying philosophy that somebody's hundred percent could be here. and somebody else's could be here, and so on. But 100% is 100%.
I think it was called creative pathways.
Now, we call it pathways, but an additional pathways, we've got two other programs, three other programs in this building, because the student population is a little bit different. And we've got, and then the junior high has pathways, the high school has pathways, and beyond pathways, so again, a large number of students, we do keep in-house till 22.
Far more than most districts.
Depending on their abilities, I mean, again, some just have needs that we can't feed.
Most districts do not keep as many children in houses as we do. They have to go out, because they don't have the resources and the support of the community to build their own programs.
And it's a blessing and a curse.
You're absolutely right.
Children have, but people move here, because they know the programs we have.
You're absolutely right.
They come here for that reason, so.
We want to serve every student as best we can, and we certainly try as long as we can to keep them in their community.
It's an uncontrollable number. And there are some students who cannot be sent home. They are in residential facilities. Count your lucky stars, if you only have to pay $200,000 a year per student, and it's an uncontrollable number of students. Please keep that in mind, Finance Committee members. We scrutinize these figures, which is the job of the Finance Committee. Do it knowing them.
Good. You guys have more numbers, we'll be getting tuitions, then I'll share. Okay, that one is always a fun page. We're looking at custodians, same, we're looking for the same number of custodians, hopefully the same custodians that we covered now. Fuel, we go out to bid every year with French River Collaborative, we've already locked into that rate. I am so sorry, I don't recall what the rate is, but I know it is lower. So therefore, that is what the decrease is in the fuel line. Electricity, I think we keep being optimistic and then going back up. Although the electric rates are going back up. So for this year, we're aligning a little bit higher than what's budgeted, the rates are going up. Our utilization has increased because of the devices and technology has caused our electric usage to increase, and we're charging carts in every classroom every night. But between those two, we're fortunate enough to cover our utilities. Water and sewer, we're struggling a little bit, as we just mentioned in the regular meeting. This year, we are definitely going over that $48,000. I'm having a hard time looking at our trends. Any of you that has been here for a while may know, we've struggled a little bit with the irrigation system, and the fact that the irrigation system also, if you get charged for water, you also get charged for sewer, even though we're not using sewer. Had that conversation once with the town, it got a little credit, but then it's not gonna happen each year, so. It's certainly directly related to how dry a spring or summer is, but it's a little bit more of a challenge to get it handled. So I think we're gonna be short this year, but we just bumped it up a little bit for next year, and we'll move forward with optimism. The building projects line, $535,000, that is the other page of your capital plan. So if you go back to page one, the whole next year with the $60,000, that top 150 is just the combination of technology and non-technology. With the $60,000, we're looking to do some updates on the guardrails in your parking lot and HVAC maintenance and upgrades. That. Anything else on that page? The last page, that replacement of equipment is your copyers. It's actually, it uses, right? We said purchasing.
I got a quick question.
Yep.
Snowy.
Yep.
You're budgeting $14,000 for this year, and that, is that the custodians doing the work?
No.
And that's all the planning?
Supply, we contract out, so we go out to bid, this is no jab at all. It's a lot of work, Sturbridge has a lot of roads. The Sturbridge DPW cannot do the parking lots. The smaller towns, their DPWs can do it. So DPW has enough to keep our roads clear.
They route the roads in.
Right, so we have to, we solicit bids each year for this building, as well as the junior high and the senior high. So that's the cost of the parking lots.
Not the walkways or anything?
Roundskeepers, roundskeepers come in, the custodians come in over time if needed, to clear the sidewalks and sand and saw.
I was gonna say, hell, $14,000 to take care of all this, I need to get that guy.
You know, the sidewalks, that's gonna be eating your salary like that.
Okay.
So the $14,000 is just for the clearing of the parking lots.
Thank you.
All right. So now with the tuitions, we talked a little bit, just to give you numbers. And again, this year is a good, Mike, I'm gonna have you look back. The bubble we had last year with an almost 7% increase is because in fiscal '23, it was $1,300,000, bumped up to $1,800,000. Now we're $1,000,000 down. To put things a little in perspective, again, the reminder, this is ages 2.9 through 22, your mass tuition lines, that's 15 children. Those 15 children are either attending school here as part of the Pathways Program and the other programs, or we have a sub-separate program in Brentfield and one in Brookfield. So Sturbridge has a revolving fund. We figure out the cost of all the children, to serve them all in the Pathways Program, we divide it by the total number of students to charge a tuition. Brookfield has kids coming in, send the tuition, Brentfield, Holland Whales. Sturbridge pays for those students here, so they're paying a tuition to themselves. Does that make sense? Down below that, I'm trying to look at my, my row. Four. Your collaborative, the 257, that's four students. So that's typically the next step. We can't take care of them within our five Union 61 programs. Usually, the next step is, let's try the Southern Worcester County Collaborative, which is in Dudley. Then beyond that, things get, the needs are more severe, and the required support is higher, and we end up in private placements. So the number above that, that $1,000,001, is 15 students.
Do we have to look at where you have placement?
All of them.
Only one of which is a residential student. But those residential students are, that's an extremely expensive tuition.
And these all have their own, I'm trying, it's a plan?
Education plan?
Yeah.
Individual education plan.
Everybody's got their own, a different education plan, so you couldn't, so these are all. So 14 other students, or 15 other students, one's residential, 14 others have all separate plans.
Yeah, all of these students have separate plans.
There's nobody that, not enough, where, okay, I got it.
No, their needs are so severe.
Separate needs that can't be covered in. No, 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 I just didn't know if there was, there was a group that, you know, like five or six that you could.
Yeah, their needs are so severe that we.
I'd say.
But that's sort of what we do here. So like the kids, the children in our programs are sort of grouped according to their level of need, their ages and their level of need.
Yeah.
So that is sort of what we do. And the schools that we look at here all have their own, their own thing, their own, their own skill sets.
I think you guys are great, don't get me wrong. If I was a teacher, I'd have nails up on the walls.
I'm an idiot.
I'm gonna be in jail.
Good questions, yeah, questions.
You guys, you guys are great, huh?
Good questions, though.
No, yeah, they're good questions, and I like keeping us on our toes by having a newbie in the audience is good.
Because it's good.
I'm just trying to catch up with.
I hear ya, it's all good. So the awesome news is, with all of that going on, and a little bit of optimism here and there, full disclosure, we're looking for a budget of the $13,895,627, which is 2.9% increase. And along that line, when you saw earlier, the enrollment increase is, if we can count down the governor's budget, going to result in, I don't recall the number, but an increase in Chapter 70 money, more than $30 per student, which is the bare minimum. I know, it's almost just say nothing, just give us nothing and they get money.
Is that Chapter 70 money that's back in the general?
To go to the town. So it's part of, to make it way too simple, school budget, Chapter 70, the rest is what we're asking the taxpayers to pay. And I don't have the total number, wouldn't be, but at least the Chapter 70 is increasing directly in response to the increase in enrollment. When you look at the breakdown, you get more funding for special needs, low income, and English learners. So those are driving your increase for next year.
You run through those three, so you're asking for, let's call it $14 million.
Yep.
So we would raise and incorporate $14 million to cover the costs of your budget for this year.
Yep.
But we'd also get Chapter 70 money that comes as a revenue.
Correct. Yeah, so when you're looking at your revenue side.
So my cost is $14 million less whatever.
Correct.
Even though it goes into the general.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. Little slightly different, when you get the bill of the assessment from Tantasca, they've already taken off the Chapter 70. So Tantasca runs like its own community. It does the same thing Sturbridge does. Here's the budget we need, now what revenues do we have to put towards it? And then what are we left to send to the taxpayers, which is the assessment?
And when I saw your first chart, we were going for 2.9% versus 6.9%, I was originally.
Having, right?
She's looking for last month of this year, the answer is no. What you're saying is, we had the big jump last year.
Correct.
Because of the significant increase in special education costs.
Yeah.
That base is still here, and we're just growing 2.9% on top of that.
Correct, correct. In fact, we were a little tight this year. This year, we had, you can see, when we put our projections for tuitions, we project based on what we have right now for students. So we're asking for $100,000 more, because we did have one more placement early in the year. We're covering that within the budget, we're actually, I think, covering it with rural aid. So we don't typically just put something in thinking we're gonna have a student that isn't able to be served, but if we know when we build a budget that someone's being looked at or evaluated, we say in the reasonable way, we probably have to anticipate that placement.
What was the average increase on, say, the private school tuition?
Why did you bring that up? So that was part of the big blip here, is last year, and the states, even though they're private, they're private placements, they're private businesses, but the state sets the cap, last year it was 14%. So for all of our noise, we didn't make much progress, we were across the state. There were certainly a lot of people complaining, being upset, because to our point, we run programs in-house. We couldn't just say we need 14% to continue to run our Pathways Programs. But again, I get it, the number of specialized facilities is decreasing. It's harder, we have had students that we knew we could no longer serve, and it took us six months, nine months to find someplace that could take them, because they're decreasing. So I get it, but the state gave 14% for the year we're in. Next year, they capped it at 3.9%, I think. So it's close to a 4% increase on our tuition next year. Good question. Any other questions at this point? So our chair closes the public hearing. Karen's got it. And then we're gonna move into, back into the cafeteria, excuse me, library, where we will formally vote the number that we want to move forward and ask the town for, as well as finish the rest of our business hearing.
Fiscal 2025 budget, town meeting at $13,895,627. Do I have to hold him? So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you for your help.
That was it for superintendent's report?
Help in public access?
I do have a question about the funds from the state for the migrants. I know we had talked earlier that we received $5,000. Has there been any additional monies?
Yep, actually, well, we just got notice. Most other, it was a DESI financial situation. Most others received funds in early February. It took us a month more to get ours. So we received $300,000, give or take, 301 or something like that. Finally, now they, that rolled all the way through to February, where the others, back in January, February, got the initial first quarter or so. But because we got left off for a conglomerate of data issues and a lot of complaining, they rolled it all the way up and gave us, gave us fairly carried. So, and the good news is, that can roll over to next year. So we're in a good place now. We've probably earmarked about half of it between your added L staff, between the cost of transportation, translations, maybe a few other things. But we at least finally know the town is going to get money, and we're no longer deficit spending.
Can you refresh my, I'm sorry.
Are there additional funds expected after this $300,000?
Depending on how long we have these children. For the rest of this year, monies are still there. I don't know how much the pool is being drained, but until the pool is gone, we can still tap into it.
Yes. Can I just question, I think, on the enrollment number of the young children students that Burgess?
Was it down to 26 from the initial 30?
But they're still part of the, so it's 36.
So they're still coming back, though.
It was 36.
Some of them are coming back, some of them have been relocated out of Sturbridge. Right. So they're still here.
Okay. So any other questions?
Is it 36 or 26?
It's 26 that we are, it's 36.
36.
It's 36, yeah. We've had folks move to other locations. We're still serving 36. Because they started here and now consider elsewhere and still.
No, we had the, I will look back to on that exact number, because we had two families that had moved out of state.
Okay.
So we'll look at that.
Right, yeah.
So it might be 33, yeah.
Any other questions? For public access, we move on, secretary's report.
We did not, usually, our subcommittee's negotiations, and it's a quiet, non-negotiating year.
We like.
We do.
We'll move on to Mrs. Goodman.
Keep it brief. So similar to what we did tonight, we went over the budget to Tantasca, and we voted to approve it, it's about a 3% increase as well, similar to here. Our public hearing is on March 19th.
19th, I think, yeah.
And then, I'm always impressed with our students at the high school. They do a lot, so just a few things that they're doing. The technical students are going to the Harriet hospital to help. The CAD students built a mini golf course in the Joshua High Library, which is fantastic. Their students are also working with the Rotary Club to do volunteer work in the community, which is great to see. community, which is great to see, and just also connecting kids with various opportunities in the community. NHS is doing a book drive through K through six, and they are not going to turn down any books from the community, just an FYI. Um, and I think that's it.
Thank you. Now we will move on to unfinished business.
So, yeah, following up from last month, we promised to put the school admissions policy in the packet for your FYI. There was questions on residency and, and how we go through that. This policy lays out the requirements on what's needed for admission, which includes residency proof. Uh, and, and it certainly is a struggle, sometimes worse than others. We've had a little follow-up conversation, I had a conversation with our legal counsel, who said, certainly if you've done your due diligence and are absolutely positive, something is not right, our legal counsel would be happy to write a legal letter and, and see if that makes any changes. She absolutely does not suggest we ever hire a private detective. Because when you hire a private detective and they go rogue or do something they should not do, it is on us.
So the police cannot have any clearance?
So they can. And, and I also, I was getting to, I also called the chief and, you know, wanted to pick his brain a little bit and said, you know, we're hearing SRO used to help us a little bit more than recently, and that word is, SROs are saying that that is not something they should be doing.
Based on new training and like, um, guidelines from the state as far as MOUs go, um, that's where that issue is coming from.
But your chief isn't, and again, our, our lawyer has said, as far as she and we're concerned, we're dealing with folks that are likely breaking the law. So is that not a police issue? Well, because, so when I talked to the chief, he certainly said, he said, you know, no, absolutely, he said he'd look into it. He said, there probably was some training where they say what is typically not in your job duty and the state's MOU might not include. But ours has been tweaked a little, and he said, if we need to tweak it more, we'll tweak it more, but I do believe we should be helping where we can. So I think he'll clear things up and we'll get a little more, you know, between that and, and writing an official certified illegal letter on occasion, if, if you feel you've exhausted all measures, we can try that. Um, and that's sort of, we'll keep plugging away at it. I don't, I, I think your policies.
Building a partnership with like, approach the police department. I mean, we, we used to do section eight investigations, right? And kind of the same thing where people were, um, defrauding the government of money. So this would be like defrauding the Sturbridge taxpayers. So they had a specific, you know, couple officers, and they'd go in and they'd do their investigations, and then, so I just figured maybe.
And I think going forward, and again, if your, if your SRO is tied up, we should be comfortable just calling the police department.
But now that we have a conversation with the chief, I think we feel better that we can go back, because in the past, we were receiving support, like from Hillary when she was on, um, she would do a little bit more investigating for us. And so now we have the chief's support, so we will. Pardon my ignorance on this. Okay, so if you have a family who is, who owns a property, it is a residential property in town, they are taxpayers, but say they reside in another town, but they. Tricky situation. So questions I would ask on that situation, um, is, is the property that they own in Sturbridge being otherwise occupied? As in a tent? Is that they, are they, are they receiving? Because the national general law doesn't just speak to where somebody rests their head. It talks about being part of a community. Okay. So it's beyond just sleeping somewhere. Right. So, right, 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 well, don't, this is where it's tricky. This is where it's tricky. And I mean, we have, um, situations like that that happen, but I would be really curious as to whether or not the property that is here in town that they are not utilizing and going to a home somewhere else, um. How is that? Is there a, are they subletting it? If it's, you know, that type of situation.
It's technically.
Yeah, no, they are, and, and the law used to be actually much clearer. Where does that child lay their head the majority of the week, Monday through Friday? It's now not that.
It's not, and, and that, and I understand why that is.
Where is their custody agreements are not the way they used to be. Right, right.
Very fluid and flexible. So this is not an action item, so we just.
No, no, just following up, it was business from last month.
I actually, um, have, I don't know, I guess it just would fall under unfinished business, but touching back on how we have the facilities field use is not a policy procedure. I know that you and I spoke before, a couple months ago, we were not at the, we were not doing well, have visitor's policy, we don't have a policy, but we do have a procedure, right?
Right.
And did we decide that we were just going to keep that that way, or is that in the handbook? Because I can't find that.
And I, and I do filter follow-up on, so I will. And those are things that we, and again, with the new, with the new website, each building has more control over what they want to put up, so that's a reminder, we can put something up.
So like visitors are one thing, helpers are another.
So you do have the parent volunteer helper.
But is that something that you would, do we need a policy on like visitor, I guess, more, I don't see for this, I'm going to put it your.
And again, I mean, I, what are you looking for that policy to be?
I don't know.
So that's why I think it's kind of a, it's, it's one of the protocols, I mean, and I, I'd have to look at what you have for me. Certainly you want.
I think that if I remember correctly, the conversation stemmed from seeing people during school hours on property. We have posted, as you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
And it has actually put together, and, and Colby has enforced it. So, you know, question B is, you know, what is the point of the visitors? Is it to make sure that people know that they're not allowed here after, or protocol contact? What are you looking for?
I guess I'm just looking for the procedure or the, some things that we can see.
So I, so I, so I have.
Does people know they have to come in and sign in, and they have to come in through this door?
I mean, we should have enough signage to say, all visitors must enter one place and sign in here.
We do that.
Um, and because the, we, the visitor can run the gamut. You can, you can have a, a visitor that's a parent or volunteer, you could have a vendor.
500 people at an event.
Could have, yeah.
Oh, you could have 500 people at an event, so that does have.
The Memorial Day thing.
Right, yeah. So, I mean, we, when we do smaller events, we are, as you see, we have people stationed to sign in, but when we host a holiday concert, that would be unattractive.
Right, right.
We wouldn't be able to do that. Um, so, you know, I guess there's so many different situations, but I'd be curious and have further conversation with you about it.
Noted, we'll put it on the books.
Volunteers in general is something.
That we have, that is, that's something we can look to put on the website.
So I, if there is staff procedure in like, in the staff handbook, how visitors are accepted, I guess, I just don't have, I just don't see documentation.
Volunteers, yes, so I guess.
Volunteers are different from visitor, yeah.
Yeah, and visitors feel, feel different, I mean, it's for me.
Because it's not really a visitor if you're heading in a van.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's true.
What's most important is that they're signing in. And A, that means they're getting approval to be here.
Right.
B, you know they're in the building in case of an emergency.
Yeah.
You always want to know every visitor that's in your building in case.
And we're actually.
There's an emergency, evacuate, you take that list and say.
We're working on an electronic means of that. We actually helped us, we're piloting it with our staff. So like the staff, we have a kiosk, iPad kiosk where they can, and a QR code that they can actually sign up to, and then they'll say if they're going to lunch. Do you know what I'm saying? So we'll, we'll work on that, and then as time goes on, we would then implement that for visitors to come in.
Okay.
But I guess my, where I'm stuck is with the difference between the visitor and the difference between the volunteer. Volunteer process is firm, they actually.
Yeah, that I can see.
Yeah, and all of, and all.
Yeah, I, I think that lends itself to a clear process of procedure.
Visitor is a little tougher, other than everything.
I'm glad we had that, because this is what I want.
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect, thank you for that. Is there any other new business? Okay, uh, at this point, I will make a motion to adjourn. Mary Moten, Whitney Second, all in favor? Thank you.